Let's continue with our agenda. Our next item is number three.
Good morning. Number three, public health updates. Vaccination efforts in El Paso County. Susan Wheeler, Director, Department of Health. Good morning.
Good morning. Looking forward to the update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to be here. I feel like it's been just a little while. I'm going to introduce who we have to present today, and then I'll come back up as part of the presentation. And we also have our coroner here, who has, you know, for the 2020 year, who has served as the deputy medical director. And he's going to present his annual report that somewhat ties into our update today. We have talked about before the collaboration, which is the Vaccine Consortium of El Paso County and Colorado Springs. Everything we do is around collective action. And this group has seen tremendous collective progress. We have a member of our Fort Carson Military Branch with us today, Major Vass. He is in charge of public health on Fort Carson. And we also have numerous other military partners. But as we, I call it, do a roadshow, which we have been to give updates about vaccine, and also that we still have a lot of work to do as it relates to increasing our vaccination rates, where we've seen the demand go down a bit. And we have increased supplies. And we knew that that was going to happen, that we're still slow and steady and still doing a lot of vaccinations. But we don't do that without our partners. And we don't work in a silo. And so I think it's really important that we hear from our partners. We presented to the Manitou Springs City Council, presenting to you today. We have a presentation to the Colorado Springs City Council. We are planning to present to the Fountain City Council as well as to some other groups, because I think it's very important that we understand the data objectively on how El Paso County is doing and how we can work together to provide information and outreach through trusted partners to increase vaccinations. We have our Board of Health President, Dr. Chubish, with us today. Our medical director, Robin Johnson, and she's available for any questions as well. And we also have one of our outstanding epidemiologists. Fadi is part of our data and analytics team. And he was recently recognized as an Advocate of the Year for the National Association of Mental Illness. And so we do have a really great group here to provide an update. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. And then I'll come back up and would love to take some questions. And what we're focusing on today is the vaccine distribution and where we are.
Good morning, everyone. Pleasure to be with you here in this beautiful rainy morning. Good to see you in person. I'll be giving a brief update into what the numbers look like, into our vaccine campaign, and some predictive look into the future. Our campaign has gone through somewhat of an evolution. As you recall, in December and January, the biggest barrier that we were facing was supply. We were vaccinating folks according to a phase approach that the state has had implemented in order to vaccinate those most vulnerable first. So that was our first barrier. Then we moved on to a capacity issue where we had to ensure that we were able to vaccinate a large number of people in one place or multiple places at the same time. And now we're entering into sort of what we call a third phase of our evolution, perhaps the most complex. And that's the issue of demand. How do we address a decrease in demand? How do we recognize the decrease in demand? And how do we identify it and try to resolve it and move forward? As you may have heard, there's two goals that we're looking at right now. A national goal to get 70% of adults vaccinated by July 4th, and about 63% of adults fully vaccinated. Locally here in the state, we have a different goal. 75% of eligible population to be vaccinated with the first dose. Both goals happen on July 4th. But the local goal is a bit, includes more people, because it's not only adult population, it's the entire eligible population. Most recently, that expanded to include 12- to 15-year-olds. And for El Paso County, that eligible population denominator comes out to about 609,000 people. We have vaccinated 50% of that. Sometimes we get caught into all these percentages and numbers, but that number is an incredible number to say out loud. One in every two people in El Paso County that are eligible have been vaccinated with at least one dose. That's an incredible number to recognize and not let it fall behind in all these stats that we throw around and all these goals that we have to meet. We do have 50 days to go from the last time we had the data until July 4th. And that comes out to about, in order for us to meet that goal, we need to vaccinate anywhere between 2,900 people and 3,000 people per day. That's new people every day in order to meet that goal. Unfortunately, recent weeks, our rate of first dose for new people has been decreasing. I'm showing a graph right now. That's the first page of our vaccine dashboard. The highlighted graph here, that is responsible for the first dose for new people. You can see most recently, there's a decline here and perhaps a plateau. We need that to get up again in order to catch up and meet our goal. When we compare El Paso County to other large counties in Colorado, if we look at the 10 largest counties in Colorado, again, unfortunately, we're, we rank 10th. We're very fortunate here in El Paso County, because we have relationships with our federal partners. They feed us data on a weekly basis. And that's not something common that exists even on the state level, let alone at the county level. So we're very fortunate and thankful for that relationship. So on the screen, we show El Paso at 43.5%. That's only state data. If we include the federal data, we get up to 50.7%, which is a more accurate picture of what's happening here in El Paso County rather than just looking at the state data. But even with that, sadly, we're only, we get bumped up to 7th place rather than 10th place. We surpassed Pueblo and Weld. And if you look at the percentages, there's a huge difference between those that are 10th, 9th, 7th, and those that are 1st, 2nd, or 3rd. Boulder is almost at the 70% mark. So we want to make sure that we are in front of the pack, not behind the pack in terms of vaccinations. When we look at differences in age, the 65 and above, 3/4 of that population has been vaccinated. The 40 to 64, half of that population has been vaccinated. And the 12 to 39, only a quarter of that population has been vaccinated. This graph is showing a little bit of a phenomena where initially, there is a bump. Here, if you follow my mouse, there's a bump in the 65 and above. Those are the people that want to get vaccinated right away. So there's an initial rush, and then there's a bit of a plateau. Now, the 65 and above, we expect that to be our highest group because of the serious illness risk that is associated with COVID-19. So the group right now is at 77%. If we throw in the federal estimates, that might get us to about 80 to 85%. And we expect that to be the ceiling of the highest group that we will have. Unfortunately, the 12 to 39 group, there's not enough demand there, not enough people in that age group that is getting vaccinated. Another way to look at this is to look at it in terms of decades, to identify the single decade that is lagging behind. The blue bar on here is the population size. The maroon bar is how many people of that population have been vaccinated. And right away, it jumps out to you, the 2029 group is by far the group that has the biggest difference between vaccinated and total population. It's a bit unfair to judge the 12 to 19 just because the 12 to 15 were recently made eligible. So it's a little bit unfair to look at that group just yet. Instead, let's look at 20 to 29 who've had a period of time to get vaccinated. The vaccines are incredibly efficient, and they're working. Since our 65 and above group hit about a 60% or 70% mark, we saw an incredible phenomena occur. The age distribution shifted younger in hospitalizations. Our deaths, the average age dropped by 10 years, an incredible drop in the average age of deaths. And also, the average age of cases dropped as well. So what's happening here is that the 65 and above group hit a threshold where they were becoming immune from getting the disease and immune from getting serious illness from the disease. So everything was shifting younger and younger. And that's a clear sign of the vaccine working. Now, the prevention and mitigation strategies, such as social distancing and mask wearing, remain important for those that have yet to be vaccinated. That's the most important point here in terms of the strategies that are, we've been using all this time before we got the vaccine. They are still in place for the people that are yet to be vaccinated. It's all about reducing your risk from getting COVID and getting serious illness from it. One easy way to illustrate the effectiveness of the vaccines is to look at the incidence versus the percentage of people getting vaccinated. On this graph, the higher you are, the higher incidence you have, so more cases you have that are new. The more to the right you are, the higher number of people that you've vaccinated. And you can almost draw a perfect linear line going through the counties of a decreased pattern. If you take a look at Boulder, Denver, Jefferson, Douglas, and Laramie, they're all above that 50% mark, and their incidence is low. Unfortunately for us, where we're Pueblo and Weld and El Paso, our incidence is high, and our vaccination is not comparable to the other counties. So this is a very, very small way of showing a relationship between a decrease in incidence and a high percentage of people being vaccinated. Yes, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes, please go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So have you looked at other areas of how this graph could be influenced? Other factors, variables?
Population size, though, is adjusted for in the incidence and the percentage of vaccinated. One of the limitations of this graph is, of course, it does not include federal estimates. So we're only relying on state data. And the reason for that is because all the other counties, we don't know their federal activity.
Have you looked at demographics? Additional demographics? Because I'll be honest, I did some, just looking at the different counties, demographics, higher population of Hispanics, people of color, and it would generally also skew this line. So I'm just wondering if people have looked at other things as well?
We do look at those factors for this specific relationship here. No, that does not adjust for that. This is just simply incidence versus a percentage of vaccinated. But that's definitely a group of factors. Okay?
Thank you.
So the biggest question here becomes, how do we understand this demand issue? One of the sort of national standards for understanding this issue is this Kaiser Family Foundation study. It's an incredible study. And it's powerful, because it's surveyed throughout the months of the vaccinations. And what they decided, what they found out was basically you can divide people into four groups. Those that will get vaccinated right away. Those that will wait and see. Those that will get vaccinated only if it is required by school or job or whatever parameter. And those that will not get vaccinated. And what you see here is as more and more people get vaccinated, those two middle groups decrease over time. So that's a bit of a good news. And that the folks that are hesitant, that percentage is decreasing over time. The challenge becomes in approaching and breaching the group that is only if it is required and definitely not. That concludes...
Yeah, thank you. I think the interest, there's interesting data there that that percentage of definitely not really hasn't changed.
Yep.
Are there any questions? Thank you for the presentation. Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. On the slide where you're showing the percentages by population, it was a graph where they were leveling off, right there.
Oh, sorry.
Right there. So mathematically, you should be able to extrapolate based on the current rate as well as rate of change. 50 days out, what would the number or estimates be based on the current rate or rate of change?
I don't want to be a bearer of bad news here in this beautiful morning, but based on the current rate, we will not meet that goal. We will not even come close to that goal based on the current rate. And that's largely driven by this graph right here. The decrease, that decreased slope right here, we basically need to make up that ground and vaccinate 2,900 to 3,000 people in order to get going. But most recently, it has seen a little bit of a bump. So it's not all bad news.
Are there other questions? So I have a quick question. If you go back to that previous chart, it was the age, little, I think, the age cohort. There we go. So, you know, obviously, there's a slope on those lower colors. And we would be of increasing concern if that slope were to flatten out further. And I think, of course, we'd be interested in a steeper slope on those lines. But at least from what I can tell in the last, maybe it's about a month or so, the slope appears to be steady.
Yep.
So I think what that might mean, you're saying we won't, won't meet the recommended dates to get to those percentages. But as long as that slope remains steady, we will get there. It's just going to take longer.
That's right. What we're seeing day to day is a fairly consistent number of new people coming in, which means that goal will be met. It just will be happened after July 4th. The encouraging thing here is that the 65 and above continues to see new people. So it's not like we've had any days where zero people from that age group has been vaccinated. So it's just slowly trickling in. Although, from a disease perspective, we want vaccinations to happen as quickly as possible so that the individual reduces their risk from getting COVID. Every day that you're not vaccinated, you're increasing your risk of contracting the disease.
And then if we could go to the chart that had the comparison of the different counties? I think, there you go, thank you. So we kind of talked about it briefly already. You know, we have, we do have a different demographic in El Paso. As many people don't know, we actually have the youngest demographic, I believe, of any of the counties on display there. And it is the youngest demographic that is more, seems to be more reticent in getting the vaccines. Maybe you discussed it already, and I missed it, but have you been able to kind of account for that age demographic difference? And if that skewing of the population demographic were to be adjudicated in the data analysis, do you know where we might stand on this? Kind of the point is, how much of that is in play here on this data? You know, if it were to be removed mathematically, would we just move to the left, you know, one county? Or would we move four counties or what have you? I don't really know.
That's definitely a valid question. I mean, just the sheer number of people here. We're either the top or the second most populated county, period. And I believe we're either 2nd or 3rd in terms of the young population. We'll have to check the latest estimates, and the new census is going to change that. But that's, you can see that here, we have a huge number of 20 to 29-year-olds. And that puts us a little bit of a disadvantage. But it just means that there's also more people to get vaccinated. So sort of a glass half-full, half-empty there, the way that you look at it. But it's definitely an issue.
Great, thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
I just want to point out that I think the point that the motivation is tied to risk or perceived risk obviously is going to make that group of 20 to 29, who knows that they are far less likely to experience complications. I don't know that I would say that they are reticent to get the vaccine or is that they just don't see it as medically necessary as some of those older folks. And I personally prefer to respect people's personal and private health decisions. So while we want to see continued effort and make sure this is available and the education is available, I think we need to be a little careful about trying to make choices or trying to overemphasize that people need to make choices because we've decided that they need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we can go back to the slide that shows where we compared to others. So again, I just want to highlight a couple of things. When we're, somebody mentioned motivation. When the, you know, because right now, we're with all the changes, CDC, the president talking, you know, there may be less emphasis for some people to want to get this based on just the way. So when we were in the middle of having to get the most demand and having to get the vaccines here, when we saw that big spike of getting people vaccinated is when we were not receiving our full share of vaccines. So I do want to just at least mention that that also is a factor. When people were trying to get it, and the state and CDC and everybody was saying, you need to get the shot, which has now been slightly diminished, I think, over the last week, we weren't getting them. And so that, I think, factors in on this. And as I mentioned earlier, demographics, we do know there's hesitancy in other areas. And again, I just make it as an acknowledgement that the counties who are on the lower end of this are on the higher end of having minority populations. Boulder is the least diverse of the communities. I was just stating a fact of what may be other factors going on in some of this. Thank you.
And to that point, you know, it's probably reasonable to assume. I think it can be maybe addressed statistically to see if there is something significant in that. But having had that shortfall in vaccines earlier, what seemed to be more of a short, you know, less of a distribution here than in other counties in Colorado, that might have placed us maybe a couple of weeks behind everybody else. And that could actually have a play on this data as well. And it's hard to know, because maybe we had an effective process to catch up, but maybe it wasn't, you know, we never got there. So maybe, maybe our data is comparable to two weeks ago or something from the other county's data. I don't know if that's actually true or not. But I think it's an interesting, you know, postulation that could be true.
And you're absolutely right. It's impossible to know if it's a factor, but it's also impossible to know that it's not a factor. One thing that we sort of agree on as, as public health here is that the demand issue is a multi-factor issue. It's never going to be, I'm not getting vaccinated because one reason. We recognize that our population is diverse, and our population is humongous. So there's going to be a bunch of issues that lead to that.
So any other questions? All right, thank you very much. I think, appreciate the information. And Susan, you might bring up, I have some interest in kind of how things are going with the Don't Wait, Vaccinate campaign. You might be, you might be talking about that here soon, so.
Sure, and I apologize. I forgot to mention that we have our outstanding Public Health Information Officer here too, Michelle Hewitt, who has really been making tremendous strides and efforts with partners on the Don't Wait, Vaccinate campaign, as well as I know our county attorney, Diana May, will get into some policy clarification as we, we experienced that there was some changes last week. I did want to say a few things before I get into the Vaccine Consortium based on your feedback and just to acknowledge that, you know, all of the information that you were sharing as it relates to the reasons why, you know, our vaccination rates are low, I think that those are, it's so multifactorial, and it's not a clear-cut situation. And so I would ask anyone listening to this presentation or even the media, try not, do not make it a clear-cut situation, because we do not have primary data. We haven't done the surveys and to really figure out, you know, the reasons why people aren't getting vaccinated. We are making some educated assumptions on that. And I feel strongly that public health role, with your help, and you all have been very helpful. You serve on the Vaccine Consortium. You also have helped in different parts of the county and rural areas in providing access. Our role is to provide access to the vaccine and to provide information and education. And people make their informed decisions as to whether or not they are going to get the vaccine. And I do not want to lose sight. This is extremely important. Our Vaccine Consortium, which comprises of hospitals, our three hospitals, UC Health, Centura, Children's Hospital, pharmacies, for-profit, not-for-profit organizations, local public health, Peak Vista, Matthews Vu. There's a lot, there's a powerhouse of the Vaccine Consortium. And I do not want to lose sight on their tremendous progress that they have made. And we have a partner here from Fort Carson, Major Vass. When we talk about El Paso County, we have one of the largest military installations in the county. And we work very well with them. And with their vaccination efforts, we have vaccinated collectively over 500,000. We have provided over 500,000 first vaccine administration. So over 500,000 doses of vaccine. And El Paso County's population is around 722,000. Or if you look at some other estimates, it's 748,000. And so I do not want to lose sight of that. While we are at the point where the demand has lessened, we are still slow and steady. But the message is, is that we've made a tremendous amount of progress. We've still got work to do. But I don't want to lose sight of the tremendous progress. And we have navigated through all of the issues together, whether it was not getting our vaccine supplies and, and working with the state to, to get increased vaccine supplies. And I know some of our, one of our highest weeks, I think it was 48,000 doses administered. And that was just with state supplies. And now we're still making a lot of progress at, at over 20,000 a week. And our Vaccine Consortium consists of a triple action plan where we're leveraging existing infrastructure, the hospitals, the pharmacies. We have set up mass vaccination sites, one on the south part of town, one on the north side of town. And we are heavily focused, which we have been, on reducing barriers. And that was a large part of our effort. We went from a low-barrier process to a no-barrier. You don't have to make appointments. You can walk in. It's free, efficient, safe, and effective. And we are working now, slow and steady, in increasing vaccinations through trusted partners. Pike's Peak United Way. We went to their Mitchell and School and then their food distribution. And we have a mobile vaccination van. food distribution, and we have a mobile vaccination van. And we are also utilizing the state's bus as well, going to different parts of the areas and to provide access for people that want to seek vaccination. And we've partnered with the El Paso County Fairgrounds. And something that is really picking up a lot of momentum is working with our superintendents and our school leadership and our school community. And Diana May has been very, she's been a catalyst in this as well. We have a second dose clinic and also a first dose to catch 12 to 15-year-olds in Cheyenne Mountain. And so while we may not be experiencing the demand and the rate of vaccinations that we once were, we are still making progress. And goals are good, we have to set goals and that has to be our target, we have to have something to measure against. But that's what a goal is for this purpose, is that we're measuring, you know, where we are and then always strategizing with our vaccine consortium. We were meeting once per week and now we're meeting twice per week, but we strategize with medical experts, with our pharmacies, with everyone in that group, elected officials, Mayor Suthers and Commissioner Stan Vanderweerf and Commissioner Luis Gonzalez, you guys are steady on there and Commissioner Bremer fills in sometimes as well. That's the core group, that we're going to still stay connected and together and continue to make progress. And so with that, the progress that we're making, I'd like to call Major Vass up here because they have been taking some innovative approaches and they're seeing some results as well. And so I definitely don't want to lose sight of all of the tremendous progress that we're making and we need to keep it going. And there's still more work to do, but we can do this in El Paso County.
Yes, thank you. We have a question, Commissioner?
Actually, just two quick questions. The Chapel Hills site, Chapel Hills Mall, that's still open for vaccinations?
Yes.
Okay, is that, what days are, is it open?
Yes.
Trick question.
Well, Michelle, unless, she's told me otherwise that they've closed it, so.
Oh, okay.
That, so I will say that, you know, that there's always in a process of assessing resources and the demand as it relates to utilization and cost, and so that's an ongoing discussion. But as far as I know, with that trick question, it is open.
It is, it's still open. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So that site is still open. And then the, the second question is, as parents start to have concern about vaccinating their kids ages 12 to 15, could you give us your website? Do you answer questions about the vaccine there for them?
Sure, it's ElPasoCountyHealth.org. So it's www.ELPasoCountyHealth.org. And we work very closely with the schools and also charter schools, if anyone wants a webinar or a meeting, we're happy to accommodate people. Because again, our role is to provide access, information, education, and then parents can make their informed decisions. And I will say that my family is fully vaccinated, with the exception of my teenager. And that, I need to work out some logistics related to, she'll be getting out of school here soon. But that's part of it too, is that, you know, I need to have time and she needs to have time to get vaccinated. So I know that many parents are making plans. And then we, you know, different strokes for different folks, we're all working on different schedules. But we're happy to accommodate any requests for information or education.
Any other questions? So Susan, I, you know, I think some of the statistics and data that you brought forward, really interesting. You know, if I heard right, we're still working, we're still delivering, administering 20,000 vaccines a week.
Over 20,000.
Okay, that's, and over, between now and July 4th, that's probably another 15, maybe almost, almost up to 20%, not quite up to 20% with five more weeks, kind of looking at that 4th July date, assuming this rate stays the same. And kind of just doing a quick calculation of that, if we're at 50% now and adding about 15%, let's say, we won't, we might not, with the current rate, we might not make the 70% but we'll be in the maybe mid-60s percent. So we might miss it by a few percentage points, kind of doing a quick calculation on that. So I think also, you know, we have, like you mentioned this possibility that the challenges that we have, every county has different challenges and we just might have some challenges that might be just a tad tougher than others. We have a lower population density, for example, than most of the other high population counties. We have a city of less than 500,000, that's 215 square miles. And while we have great partners, and I think they're actually pretty well distributed throughout the county, you know, could be population density is having a play, here's again, one of these situations where we don't know. But there's these possible other things to consider. I'd be very interested, once we're through all this, it sounds like you'll do, be doing some analysis to try to figure out, you know, exactly what were the most, most interesting causal effects for, you know, why we are, where we are. I'd say another interesting point is with the, the fact that we've been able to really survive economically pretty well. I don't know if that means, but it might mean, there's more people at work and they have less time to go get vaccinated. So I'm not saying that is or isn't true, I just think these are kind of interesting potential components that will have to be assessed later on. And did you have a comment?
I just had a quick question.
Yes, please.
Is there an anticipated timing that we can expect for the average smaller primary care provider to have vaccines for their own patients who have not yet been able to get to one of these mass distribution sites?
That's a great question. So we do have some, some survey information that states that people trust their primary care doctors and they are not, they're waiting for the primary care doctors to have the vaccine and don't feel as comfortable going to a mass vaccination site. So the state health department is working with vaccine providers, the state, El Paso, or sorry, the Colorado Medical Society on distributing vaccine for children providers because they have just high levels of vaccine storage handling. And then we also are working with our vaccine branch to outreach to more primary care doctors. And I know that the state is aware, trying to figure out how to package the vaccine in less quantities, so it's logistically easier to vaccinate and offer in a primary care physician office. So we are seeking different opportunities for our medical community in El Paso County. And Dr. Johnson, we just connected on this yesterday about reaching out to the, to the medical society in El Paso County and seeing what we, what opportunity is there first and how we can be supportive. So that is shifting some of the strategy to, we know that that personal connection and that trusting relationship with your doctor is very important when you're receiving a vaccination. And I did want to say, when you, first to your comments, that again, it's not cut and dry, multifactorial, and I think that we'd be doing ourselves a disservice if we were trying to break it down into, you know, one little bucket or two little buckets. So I think that that is extremely important. And I do want to say that, again, we've made tremendous strides here and it's not for lack of effort as it relates to all of the vaccinations that have been provided and the folks that are not here today on behalf of the vaccine consortium. And a bit of good news, speaking of the economy, the Regional Recovery Council, which I believe you know because you serve on it, was recently recognized by the National Association of City and County Health Officials as an honorable mention for a innovative practice. And that is the group that has been core with connecting with public health and so many other entities, Visit Colorado Springs, higher education nonprofits, the Pike's Peak Foundation, Pike's Peak United Way, Pike's Peak Workforce, there's been, it's a really great group that has really helped us with a holistic approach and trying to balance public health action with the economy. And wanted to mention that because I think that that is significant, receiving a national award for, for the efforts. And that was an effort that Dirk Draper, the Chamber of, the Colorado Springs Chamber and EDC CEO spearheaded with us.
Thank you. Yeah, for me, I'm very proud of what both the vaccine, you know, group and this Recovery Council group has been doing. I think it's been great group in both of those areas and they've done a lot to address coordination within the community and I'm just proud of the work that they've done and the work that your team has done too, Susan, thank you.
Thank you. Major Vass?
Thank you, Susan. Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for this invitation and this opportunity to speak before you today. I'm Major William Vass, I'm the Director of Public Health on Fort Carson. I've served in that capacity since July of last year and I've been involved in the COVID response effort since the outset. I just wanted to express my appreciation to you and to the El Paso County Public Health Team for this coordinated effort that crosses our interconnected community boundary line in Fort Carson. We know that is, that is not a solid line and it has been wonderful to appreciate and to participate in the response effort to COVID-19 and particularly to the delivery, the administration of vaccines within this community. The relationship that we forged through this with El Paso County Public Health and larger vaccine consortium has been critical to really administering the one offensive capability that we have against COVID-19. And we've seen huge success in the administration of that vaccine. We've administered over 42,000 vaccines on Fort Carson and we're really, really proud of the effort that we have, that we have put forward. It has been a joint effort between medical and non-medical entities to come together and really respond to an expansive problem on the installation. We've approached that problem in a coordinated way through many different phases back in December, as FODI kind of stepped through the different phases that the county has faced. It's been no different on Fort Carson, we've had supply constrained and then large volumes of personnel and then addressing some demand concerns. And so as we've stepped through that from December to January, we pulled folks into our hospital and we focused on those, those key medical areas within the DOD prioritization schema and we vaccinated those folks within our, within our medical facility. And then we moved out into where we're currently located on a walk-in basis at the William Bill Reed Special Events Center. And for anybody eligible within the DOD schema, that's a, that's a walk-in area from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, excluding some federal holidays, of course. So we moved, we moved to that site and we pulled large quantities of people in and we met that population that wanted the vaccine right away. And then as we moved and we saw some of the same demand signals, we changed our approach as we, as we went into April. And we started moving out into the community, trying to meet people where they are. So we started having these small footprint, mobile vaccination efforts where we would go out to units and set up in their area and remove those barriers to access to care. And in doing that, we saw two to threefold increases in demand as we went out to those sites. And as we rotate through all the different unit footprints, you know, we're already thinking ahead and how we can continue to do that, to meet people where they are and remove barriers to access. And so we're planning to move into the next phase where we put those small footprint mobile vaccine efforts in places where people frequent. So that, as Susan was mentioning, you know, people want to ask those individual questions of providers, sometimes of peers. And they can do that in those smaller footprint areas, they can walk up and say, hey, here's my individual question. So we're trying to get after that and provide those different ways to meet people where they are physically, but also figuratively so that they can express their concerns and have their questions met. And so we can continue to vaccinate our population and reduce our overall risk to COVID-19 spreading in our community. As I, as I close up, I just wanted to reemphasize that we continue to participate in these regular open communications with the vaccine consortium with El Paso County on this and myriad other public health matters, and we're thankful for that. Thank you, thank you, Susan, for this invitation and to you Commissioners for being willing to hear about how one partner, among many partners, are helping to respond to this community, community efforts. Penning any questions, I'll hand it back to Susan.
Any questions for the Major?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just express our thank yous for being a great partner to us and, you know, we work together so well, we've been doing this for years, this is just another example of that. And you're coming here today to give us a quick update on what's going on on our military bases is just a perfect example of that. So we appreciate deeply you're coming here and sharing some of that information with us. It's just another demonstration of the partnership that we've had with Fort Carson and the other bases for a long time. So thank you, Major.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Diana May, County Attorney. Susan's asked me to give a little bit of an update on some of the new provisions that are currently in effect with regard to face coverings and also the public health orders on the various state restrictions that are still in effect. As you're aware, Friday, late afternoon, the governor issued his new face covering executive order and then incorporated that into a public health order. General rule, we're trying to get the information out there as best we can and including late into Friday evening, but the general rule in Colorado right now is face coverings are not required under the governor's lifting of his previous mask or face covering order. This order that he issued expires on June 1st, so this is in effect until May 31st. There are exceptions to that general rule, there are six different categories that the governor said masks are still required if you are unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated. And these are the six different categories. The school areas is a little tricky because it requires the teacher to be vaccinated and then the 16 to 18-year-olds to be fully vaccinated. And so it's a little bit trickier in the school arena, but these are the various six different areas that the governor has said that masks or face coverings are still required if you are not fully vaccinated or if you are unvaccinated. And then to always make things a little more complicated, there's exemptions from the exceptions. So what that means is that even if you fit in one of those six categories, you're not required to wear a mask if the areas that are present in these next two slides are met. And as you can see, it could include an individual who's hearing impaired, it also could include someone acting and engaging in a public safety role. So these individuals are not required to wear the masks even if they fit one of the six areas that the governor says masks are still required in the limited circumstances. The governor then continued his additional exemption provision, which is something you guys are familiar with because you have not had to wear masks while you're public speaking since this order has went into effect. But these are additional exemptions. For example, in a, in a G, for example, individuals who are officiating or participating in life rights or religious services. So these exemptions are still in effect, meaning that you do not have to wear a mask even if the governor's mask order says you do if you fit one of these various different categories. Also, the mask or the face covering provisions do not apply to individuals 10 years or younger or those who medically cannot tolerate a mask. Those two provisions are still in effect. His public health order and his executive order also made it very clear that businesses can choose to enact or enforce additional restrictions if they so choose. And he codified that in his face covering, public health order and executive order. Before I move on to what is the state minimum requirements required under the public health order, any questions on face coverings, please?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
So next, I'm going to just briefly talk about what is currently in effect with regard to the state. There was a modification on Friday that was placed in there, so we want to make sure that the public has all the information out there that they have to be able to make informed decisions. And as everyone's aware, the COVID dial was not renewed on April 15th, so that yellow and orange and green levels are no longer relevant in Colorado. I'm going to briefly talk about schools outdoors, indoors, and then a clawback provision. As you are also aware, public health, El Paso County Public Health did not add any additional restrictions on April 15th when the dial system went away. And so what we have left in El Paso County is we have to follow what the restrictions are that the governor has placed and that the state public health has placed, and I'm going to talk about those. First of all, schools, it's the same, nothing's changed there. And they're still required to cooperate with public health on outbreaks and positive cases. And then a provision that if a school is in fully remote status, there's no extracurricular activities. The schools are aware of all these and nothing has changed in the public health order with regard to schools recently. And the big change as of last Friday is outdoor events. There are currently, as of Friday, no restrictions on outdoor events. There was a carved-out exception before on seated, ticketed outdoor events over 30,000 square feet, that is no longer the case. So there are no restrictions on outdoor events, just to make that very clear, no masks required, no limitations on size, no limitation on social distancing, there are no restrictions on outdoor events. Indoor gatherings, there's still this three-tiered approach, under 100, 100 to 500, and then over 500. So keep in mind, whatever the face covering restrictions are, are applicable in these settings if there's one applicable. So for instance, if we're dealing with a jail or we're dealing with a medical facility with 100, with 100 people, whatever restrictions are still in effect by the governor's order is still here with masks. But from under 100 individuals on an indoor setting, there's no requirement for that six-foot distancing. So you don't have to, you don't have to, you know, set chairs six feet apart anymore for under 100. If you have 100 to 500, those that are not fully vaccinated or those that are not vaccinated must still maintain the six-foot distancing, but those that are vaccinated do not. So I always like to use this example. So we have 300 people in an indoor event, the business has chose to find out whether the person's vaccinated by asking people. And we have 200 people that say they're vaccinated, they can sit right next to each other, there does not have to be any distancing. But let's say there's 100 that do not want to disclose or that have said they're not vaccinated, those 100 still must maintain that six-foot, maintain that six-foot distancing. And so that's kind of my analogy that I like to use for that second provision. If it's over 500, there's a requirement that, that the business must obtain a variance from local public health and the state. And that's a pretty easy, easy process that we've, that the public health has been working with the state on doing that and that information's available on our web, on the state website. In addition, any five-star certified businesses or prior approved variances remain in effect. I know we have a couple in Colorado where we have some indoor variances. The state has also made it clear, those restrictions that I just went through on the 100, 1 to 500 and over 500 do not apply for places of worship. So that means you can have 1,000 people with no social distancing in a church. Retail services, we call this big box, and then restaurants that have sit-down dining that do not have an unseated area where 100 or more people could gather, basically a dance floor. And then schools and proms, but we don't need to spend time on there because all the, all the schools and prom gatherings that are over 500 are going to be outdoor. The important thing to note is the governor did keep in the public health order and the state public health order under CDPH, he did continue to keep this clawback provision is what I call it. What that means is that if our local capacity, our hospital capacity begins to threaten to exceed that 85% level, the state has maintained authority to come back in and work with the local public health to perhaps put some additional restrictions in the community back in place. I can let Susan address this, but the last time I checked yesterday on the website, our hospital numbers, at least on the EPC, Public Health website, did not indicate that we were anywhere near threatening this level. So I just want to make that clear that while this provision's here, this does not seem to be in our forecast on getting to this point. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'll turn it back over to Susan then, thank you.
Appreciate the update and fairly complicated, yeah.
You'll laugh, but even though it was written by the state's lawyer, it takes a while to kind of decipher what they put out, so.
Thank you, Diana. Appreciate it. I did want to ask Dr. Johnson just to give a really quick update on how our hospitalers are doing because I think that that's important with that provision. We always monitor our data closely and work closely with our hospitals, but I think it would be beneficial to hear from Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Johnson.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here this morning. So the hospitals, as we've discussed in the past, are pretty complicated, right, in how they expand and those percentages. And so if you look at capacity, they may be considered at 100%, but that doesn't mean that they wouldn't be able to expand to address incoming patients that are needed and they continually are doing that. At this point, when we were looking at those beds that are taken by COVID, we still know that we have a significant portion of patients in the hospital that are COVID-related and they are taking up a significant portion of our ICU beds as well. However, the capacity for those hospitals and how they are able to continue their isolation, continue those preventive measures with PPE and to address the ongoing medical needs of our community are not being breached. And so they report with us routinely, Stephen and Fadi and I and the CMOs, to discuss that capacity, to assure that we are aligned with them because this is their data that they are presenting for our dashboard. And you'll see that they have maintained some of that yellow, green, orange, red dial so that even if we are seeing those numbers where they are today, that that capacity and their ability to adjust is not being breached in any way. Does that make sense? So I know it can be a little bit complicated and if we need, we could always bring in one of our CMOs to speak to that more detail.
Yes, thank you, Doctor. Any questions? Just a quick comment for me. I, you know, I appreciate the difficulty in calculating, you know, this percentage rate of occupancy of the appropriate, you know, facilities within our hospitals. But to be fair to that, I think it is one of the most important pieces of data for us to continue to monitor. And that just doesn't make it easy to monitor because these hospitals can flex the number of beds that they can make available to people that have COVID. So in calculating that 85%, the numerator adjusts based on numbers of people that get hospitalized, but the denominator can also adjust based on hospital action. And that just, it doesn't make it easy to calculate. So, but we rely on our partners, our hospital partners, they do a fantastic job. And I'm thrilled that we're not close to that 85%. And I do think it's one of the most important statistics that we follow.
It is, absolutely. And I think that we are privileged in having some systems that are robust and very strongly tied across the front range. And so that flex involves some other communities and we work together in collaboration around those very issues you're talking about. But I want to really emphasize the safety of the hospitals as well, that while they still have patients that come in with COVID, it is safe and it is important to seek healthcare when you need it, whether that is because you're going to deliver a baby or you broke your ankle or you're having chest pain. And so I want our population to understand that they are poised and appropriately available for any health needs that might arise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So I guess I'll just close out with don't wait vaccine. And if you're interested at another point in time, we can do an overview of the metrics of that campaign and how that's going. I know Dr. Johnson will be on a panel this upcoming week, actually next week with KKTV Channel 11 as a really KOAA, KOAA channels 5 and 30 next week. And then there's just a significant amount of outreach and with the campaign. But I will state that, you know, as a role model, I'm fully vaccinated. I got the vaccine as soon as I could. I took my 80-plus-year-old parents in to get vaccinated. And, you know, we had a little bit of a sore arm, but other than that, we really didn't experience any, you know, any other adverse reactions to it. It is safe, it is effective, it is free, and I